Oh, boy. So with that, I'm going to open up item number 28. Um, excuse me. Yes, 28.
Item 28 for possible action. Discussion and deliberation to request the Nye County clerk to consider administering the 2022 primary and general elections using only paper ballots and hand counting the paper ballots submitted by Nye County voters to ensure accuracy and transparency of the democratic voting process.
Chair. I brought this item forward after hearing from the Tea Party and their voter integrity presentation, that they did an excellent job. The people have been concerned for some time about whether or not our votes are being processed. We've had a great explanation by the clerk, but we thought we'd bring more information to this board. So then you can hear it and the clerk can make her decision as necessary. Thank you, Chair.
Your name, sir?
Jim Marshand from Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to address you today. We are here to recommend that you vote today to dispose of your electronic voting and tabulation machines and do not use them in any elections going forward. We also recommend that you do a forensic image of all machines for safekeeping. Electronic systems have been shown repeatedly over a 25-year period to be completely insecurable and not legitimately certifiable, which means that you cannot ensure that your constituents are able to vote using a fair and transparent election voting and tabulation system. It is imperative that you secure the trust of your constituents in Nye County by ensuring that you have a fair and transparent election. And the only way to do that is to not use electronic voting or tabulation machines and instead use a paper ballot with anti-counterfeitable measures built in, precinct-level voting, and hand-tabulation voting system. So please vote as your constituents want you to do to eliminate all electronic voting and/or tabulation systems from the election process. You're now going to hear from some professionals that have been working on this for a long, long time in this specific realm. But first, let me say this. I want to ask, one of our members is not here today that was originally going to be here. Her name is Tina Peters from Clerk of Mesa County, Colorado. She's a clerk of a county very similar to Nye County. And she was detained last week for doing her job. And I'd like to ask you, what the forces that detained her, what are they trying to hide? Why wouldn't they let her come address you today? So I just want you to leave you with that and let you think about it. So first up, I've got three experts here that have been working on this for, before the 2020 election, actually. First up is going to be Mark Cook, a cyber forensics expert. Actually, all of these are cyber forensics experts. Then Russ Ramsland, and then Phil Waldron. So I'll call them up. Mark?
All right. Well, thank you.
Mark, go ahead and speak your name and spell your last name for the record.
Sure. It's Mark Cook, last name spelled C-O-O-K. All right. So I'm a Colorado native. I've been in IT and cybersecurity for many, many decades. I started developing software when I was 13 years old, back in the CompuServe and Prodigy days, which hopefully some people in the room still remember. And as a 15-year-old, I ran one of the largest bulletin boards in the Western United States, developing and actually sold a lot of software for bulletin board systems. And that's how I kind of started my business. So I've been doing this a very long time, far before the internet existed. And then I started an IT company that was responsible for helping people utilize computers to do their jobs. And before viruses ever existed or cyber threats ever existed, I was helping them with their systems. And then all of a sudden, we had bad actors show up and criminals show up that started creating viruses to get into people's systems or delete data or hacking. So I was in there in the very beginning and before there was antivirus software out there. I actually had to figure out what was going on with these computers that were being attacked by forces that no one had known about, that we didn't know existed at that time. And I was manually removing viruses from computers and getting into them to figure out how the viruses got in and basically picking each part of them out and reversing the damage. We determined, of course, exactly what vulnerabilities existed that allowed them to get in and then patch the systems. I've done work over the years for very large companies, even Microsoft, helping them find bugs in software. And I take care of companies, whether they're law firms or auto-recycling yards or medical practices, to help secure their systems from all of these threats. And I work with a multitude of different software and software vendors that produce software for all these different industries. And it is incredible, the lack of knowledge and foresight and thought that a lot of these companies put into securing their software properly. So we wonder why we have hacks all the time. This is why, because the vendors actually don't secure their software. They don't know enough about security to do a good enough job. So that's kind of my background. So when this, everyone started talking about election integrity, and I didn't know much about elections years ago, I started looking into it and realized, wow, these elections are using the same computer systems that I have been using and the hardware that I've been selling for decades and running software that I'm extremely familiar with. In fact, you know, one of our popular voting systems is Dominion. It uses a Microsoft SQL database. I worked with SQL databases since SQL started, since the first version of SQL came out. I've been using these software, and I've been installing these systems and securing these systems. So I thought, you know what? We got a group of people saying the most secure system in the world. We got another group saying there's no way that this could possibly be secure. And I figured, you know what? I'm going to find out for myself. I'm going to dive in and I'm going to look at this myself. I don't want to believe what anyone else is saying. I want to see it with my own eyes. And I'll tell you, I was horrified when I started looking into these systems. Voting systems in general, as far as the history goes, have been problematic for at least since early 2000s, maybe even late 90s, in the electronic systems when they showed up. There are numerous organizations, Congress, everyone knows that these systems are vulnerable. And people have been screaming about the vulnerabilities of these systems for years. Even in 2016, people were screaming about the vulnerabilities of the systems. And I figured, how can this be? And no one actually fixed any of these. So when I actually got my first look at Dominion in a forensic image of the software, and I got to look at it in operation, I, my jaw hit the table. I couldn't believe what I saw. And I'll just go a little bit over. Their website at the time has, lists their product security highlights, and it lists that they have encryption protections. It lists that they have comprehensive, non-alterable audit logs and that they meet all these federal guidelines. Well, I started looking into the federal guidelines, and I realized that the software does not meet the federal guidelines. I realized that the encryption protections, they have a little bit of encryption in one place, but on all these other places, they don't have encryption. So they're giving people a huge false sense of security when this stuff is not secure. The one biggest thing that I found is when I first looked into this system, I had got into the back end of the voting database and was able to flip votes in election within the first minute of getting my hands on one of these systems. It took one minute. I didn't use any other tools. I used the system as it is presented, as if I could sit in front of the EMS server that you're familiar with, I'm sure, and I could sit there and get right into the back end of the database, change votes without leaving a single trace of any change that I've made. What I have found, and I've talked to a lot of clerks and other election officials, they are being lied to. These systems, based on what I have seen, are absolutely not secure. And I feel very bad for these election officials because they're trusting the vendor or they're trusting their Secretary of State, and they certainly should not be because someone's lying. And the vendor that knows that these systems are supposed to be secure, I don't think there's any question that we want security in our election systems, right? These election systems dictate the leader of the free world, and they also, they control who teaches our children. They control everything about our lives, right? Our freedoms are completely based on these election systems being secure to ensure the sanctity of our vote. I looked at this, and I've never been more upset in my life when I saw how bad these systems are and how much people, good people, good people, honest people, patriotic Americans that are in this position to do a good job, they don't even know what's going on behind the scenes because these things are black boxes to them. So I know we don't have a whole lot of time, so I don't want to take any time from other people, but I'm happy to answer any question you have about it. This is my life. I eat, sleep, and breathe cybersecurity and network security and vulnerabilities in these systems. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Mr. Cook, before you leave, sir.
Yeah.
Very, thank you for the presentation. Very, very interesting. I have one question, sir.
Absolutely.
When you were able to get in to the system and flip votes, did you flip them back?
Actually, I did. I, in fact, flipped them one way, and then I thought, you know what? What's another way I could abuse this system? So then I hooked up a computer to the network on the side, one that could be sitting off in another room even of a building, and I flipped them back. And then I thought, you know, I wonder if I could use my iPhone to change the votes also. So I took out my iPhone and I connected it to the network, and from my iPhone, I was able to flip them again. I don't, I would never want to use a system that you can download a free piece of software on the iTunes App Store and flip votes in the election. And I think if any election official saw that happen, they would be horrified of the system that they've been using and that the people that trust them to conduct these elections knew what was going on. It would bring tears to anyone's eyes. It's disgusting and shame on them for even, yeah, allowing it to happen, lying to, lying to the people that don't know any better. It's disgusting. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me. I have a real quick question here.
Sure.
So you, what you're telling me is those machines were hooked up to the internet?
No. I'm not saying they were. There, there was a system that was, but in the images that I've looked at during the election, I was not able to yet find the evidence, and here's why. They claim that they have comprehensive, non-alterable security logs in these systems. I looked at these systems. Their logs, their retention times on the log files are tiny. Sometimes they have so many errors showing up in the log file on a normal operating system that it only holds so many log entries. So after a few hours, some of those logs are completely filled with these errors. Some of them that don't have errors only hold for a couple days. And when the election officials have a duty to hold this data for 22 months, and I know it's, some people say this is not election data. I get it. These are log files that indicate how these systems are operating that are responsible for tabulating our votes. That is election data. I'm sorry. Because if there was a hack or a break-in, those are the files you would need to look at to determine if that existed. Well, these log files are set incredibly small for no reason. There is plenty of hard drive space on these systems. We're talking about multiple gigabytes, if not terabytes, on some of these systems. They could hold log files for years, but they set them to the tiniest amount. And they actually confuse the election officials because if you look in the Dominion manual, it indicates these things are supposed to be set, I believe, at 2 gigabytes for a log file. And then about six inches below that, when they walk you through the step-by-step to set it up, they actually are telling you, if you follow those instructions, you'll end up setting them to 20 megabytes instead of 2 gigabytes, which are a massive factor of difference in that. So they confuse even the people following the directions. It's disgusting. You couldn't even, you know, I'm responsible for setting up these systems for my customers. To store credit card information, you have to pass what's called PCI compliance. It's Payment Card Industry Compliance. The system that handles and tabulates our votes as a free country could not even pass a PCI compliance test. You couldn't even store a credit card number on these machines, and these are, these are controlling who teaches our children. Yeah. It's, it's a complete joke. It's an absolute joke. And I think any IT person that was worth their way at all and understood this would notice and see this stuff very quickly. The back door in the, at least the Dominion system that I've looked at, in two different versions of it, has a massive back door in the software that would allow someone to get right into the back end of the database without a single audit log being created, no record in the system whatsoever. It is a glaring back door, glaring hole. It is IT 101. It's the first thing you close when you install this software. Not only did they leave part of it open, in their installer, in their installer program that installs the Dominion software, I found an entry in that installer. It opens the port in the firewall. That, that freaked me out.
I just, I guess I want to get his question answered. He wanted to know if it was on the network.
It was on a network. Whether it was on the internet, if it was on the internet, it would have been a straight shot for anyone to do anything.
So when you say it's on a network, how are you still getting into it if it's not, it's not cell data or something to that?
Well, I was able to sit in front of it. So if there had been, let's say, a bad actor that was in the office, anyone in the office, they could sit on any computer connected to the Dominion network and do what I did. They would just need one password, which could be, what we found is it's the same password used for multiple accounts that multiple people would have already had the password to. So they theoretically could have gone in there and made changes. No one would have known. And that's if they were sitting in front of the computer. If, or the vendor. And that's another good point is the vendor, Dominion, has their own account on these systems, and only Dominion has that password to the account.
Again, they can't do that change unless they're in the area of the machines.
They would have, someone would have to be in the physical area of the machines or... All it takes, and these things are crazy small these days, and this is actually twice as, oh. This one here is twice as big as the new ones, but this right here, this little tiny USB device that when you stick it in something, only sticks out this much, well, now they don't even stick out anymore. And that's all it would take. If you snuck this in to the back of any computer on that network, you could sit out in the parking lot and make changes, and no one would know the difference on this.
I just wanted to make sure that people understood that the way to get into it is a specific way.
There is, well, there's a number of different ways. As long as you have a connection to the network, you can get in. Here's the other very scary thing. Some of the ICX machines in Mesa had built-in wireless cards on these machines.
I wanted to get to that, too, so.
Okay. And then, and they never should have had built-in wireless cards. There's no reason for our voting system to have a built-in wireless. And what did they say? First, they said, these can't get on the internet. Well, I know they can get on the internet. In fact, the systems, if you look at the networking components in the systems, the software is actually configured. If you were to hook up a single device anywhere along that network that had a particular IP address, which is a .1 IP address like a router would have, all of the systems on the network would automatically route out to that, through that device. There is no reason that should have been set up like that. There was no encryption on the network, so the communication from system to system was not encrypted. Some of the database was encrypted, but a lot of the traffic was not. They had a web server running on one of the systems that was unencrypted. It is the most horribly set-up system ever with regards to security. I could spend two hours on one of those systems and probably remove about 90% of the vulnerabilities in two hours. And this company's been selling this for years.
Mr. Cook, let's, let's let him get his, finish his question.
Sure.
So, you know, Sam, you can help me with this. So are the Dominion machines connected to the internet? It's a simple yes or no.
It depends. You have, it depends on the machine. It depends on the county. It depends. There are, there's three different components of the voting system.
Hold on a second. Go ahead.
Our machines are not connected to the internet. Those that are in our polling locations, they're not connected to any Wi-Fi or internet.
Okay. So now how do you get the information from Tonopah to Perump?
The USBs.
So do you drive them down?
No, we count them here.
How do you tabulate the votes?
We do tabulate on a network, a secure network. An IT can tell you a little bit more about that. It's on our SQL server.
And that's what a lot of...
But the thing is, is we do not let anyone have access to our Dominion machines, our WNA DS or anything else in our offices. It's just my staff with our passwords. They're not, I mean, just like anything, anybody can access if we allow them to.
I understand that, but we're looking at...
But the machines are not attached to the internet. They're, we count them by USB.
I've had an election official tell me that also, that it was not connected to the internet, and we found evidence that one of them had been connected to the internet. And she said she had absolutely no idea how that happened. But she, she swore that she did not connect it, and I truly believe her that she did not connect it, but someone did at one point. And we, there's evidence on the machine that it was connected. It even downloaded updates from Microsoft while it was online, and she had no idea.
So in my opinion, that's connected to the internet.
Well, it was. It was connected to the internet for sure at one point. It was a, you know, for a day, it was connected to the internet. And but, and no one in the office knew.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. We're starting to get close.
Sorry. Russ, come on.
You're already at 19 minutes.
I really tried to keep it to five, but thank you, guys.
Thank you. My name is Russ Ramsland, R-A-M-S-L-A-N-D, just like sheep's land or goat's land, only it's Ramsland. I apologize kind of to everybody back there. I had slides, I didn't realize that I needed to have submitted them long ago. So everyone behind me is going to have to put up with maybe a few hand puppets and looking at the back of my head, but my wife says that's my best side anyway. So let's, let's go into this. Imagine if you could, a bank robbery, and when it's discovered, the police are really not allowed in there for a while, and when they do, they find out that all the fingerprints have been erased and all the videotapes have somehow, from the security cameras, disappeared. It would raise a certain amount of suspicion. And that's really the situation that Mark was describing for you. I run a company called Allied Security Operations Group, and we have a number of best-in-breed contractors. Mark is just one of them, one of the best, I would tell you, that I've ever run into, by the way. But we have a whole team of them because this whole cyber world is so complex now that you have to have specialists in certain areas to do certain things, whether it's forensic work or network protection, et cetera, et cetera. So the, the situation that I want to talk briefly about is I want to give you some detail without too much cyber term as to exactly what we really found in Mesa. And then I want to tell you that what we found there, we have seen in 40 other counties around the country, and not just Dominion machines. This is in ESNS machines. This is in places like Georgia and Colorado and California and Michigan and Pennsylvania and Texas, et cetera. There are many, many places to get into these systems. We have, we have sat in front of poll books where poll workers told me how they were connected to the internet. And yet you could swipe left, Google would come up, they could download a Netflix movie and be watching a movie on their poll book, and then swipe back right and check in voters. And as this lovely lady in Georgia said, Mr. Ramsland, how does this happen? It's not supposed to be connected to the Intranet, is it? And I said, no, ma'am, it's not, but it clearly is. We find that most people don't know that their, their voter registration list, when the election starts, goes to the cloud. It goes up into the cloud, and they have no visibility what happens during that election to all those voter lists in the cloud. And you say, well, we've cleaned up the voter list. Not really. Not really. Because they don't actually purge names out of that database. They just give them a different status. And in the cloud, that status can be changed, and you can create a whole inventory of voters to back up whatever you are seeing out of your machines. And we know that's happening because we ran an operation in Dallas, Texas in 2020. And in Dallas, Texas in 2020, they had to post every day the voter record of every single person who voted. Now, that record is a long, extensive record, and you can take what's called a hash of it, which is, the easiest way to think about it is, let's, let's say we added up all the zeros and ones that create that record. It makes a unique number, and we'll call that the hash. That's not exactly right, but that gives you the idea. We would download that cumulative voter list every day in Dallas because we thought something was going on in the cloud, and we were exactly right. Because by day three or four, we began to see that voter from Tuesday suddenly disappear on Friday, his voter record. And it would disappear, and then the following Wednesday or Thursday, it would suddenly reappear. But the hash was different, so it had been played with. You might be interested to know that in Dallas, Texas, in the 2020 election, 57,000 voter records disappeared during early voting and reappeared at the end, 52,000, and most of them had changed hashes. Now, that shouldn't happen. That should never happen. And the people who run the elections, the county officials, they had no idea because they don't have any visibility into real-time changes as to what's happening to the voter records in the cloud. That's the problem with electronic poll books instead of paper poll book records that you can't change in real time, that other people can't see. So the whole poll book area is a big problem. In Mesa County, we discovered, though, a bunch of other issues. And I want to just briefly run through them because the time is short, and if I tried to explain what's on my diagrams, it would, I think, drive everybody a little crazy. The, the main thing that we found, and of course, in Mesa, it was an interesting situation because we had a perfect bit-by-bit forensic engine of the databases before Dominion did what they called a trusted upbuild, which they, update, which is basically they, they build as a software update. And then we had an image after they did it. And what was amazing is we discovered, first thing, they repartitioned the whole disk. So they wiped out most of the records. And so when you ask Mark, for instance, is it connected to the internet? If I've removed all the records, if I've destroyed the evidence, it's very, very difficult to determine what happened. It's the equivalent of destroying the videotapes in the bank robbery. You can't tell who went in there. So we had that problem. The databases that Mike, Mark was talking about, by default, the main database, the SQL database, goes through what's called port 1433. Now, computers are kind of like televisions. Computers have ports. Televisions have channels. You go to Channel 13, you get ESPN. You go to Channel 7, you get NBC. You know what you're going to find when you go to that channel. Well, computers have about 65,000 and some odd ports, and they all connect to a specific place or can connect to a specific place in the computer. Well, port 1433 is the default port for the database. So the first thing any IT person does is reassign that database to a different port so an intruder can't find the database immediately. That hasn't been done. It's still attached to 1433. It's attached to Port 1433 in Antrim, Michigan. It's attached to Port 1433 in Coffee County, Georgia. I could go on and on and on. That's terrible. Mark also told you, and he was exactly right, that there is actually software that goes through it. Not only does it leave that port open, it opens it up to any IP address in the world. An IP address is like your phone number. When you and I call each other phone number to phone number, well, computers have the same thing, only they're called IP addresses. This one allows any IP address in the world to get into port 1433. Should never happen, ever. There are lots of repeated...
Hold on a second. I'm confused. If I just heard that you can't get into it unless you're right there, not unless you have some, some other card has been inserted or a thumb drive, how we get, how are they getting in?
Well, I wish I had my diagram because it would show you the entire network. Because you have... Because you have cellular networks, and you have Internet, and you have between each cell tower, you have a.
You're telling me that these things have cellular data inside of them?
They have wireless cards. And you can turn those wireless cards on remotely. There shouldn't be any wireless cards in them. And so what you like to do is try to find out where the wireless card.
Trying to get you down to the, you know, the fourth and fifth grade level?
Yes, sir.
Because you're up there at the, you know, past the high school and the college. That's the reason why I stopped you, to try to get you to say that. I mean, Scott did a good job of down at some of the levels, but you need to be a little bit more for us and them. I mean, some of us don't have the background in computer systems like you do.
Right.
Help us out. Appreciate that.
So I guess the easiest way to, to describe that is, they do have the ability to connect. And whether they appear to connect or not, you can only tell in the logs, which are largely deleted. When we have inspected machines, we have found the logs deleted. Mark talked about retention. Basically, it's like this. We are finding twenty megabytes allocated for all the logs. That's about three pictures of your daughter. So as soon as that fills up, it starts overwriting them. So it overwrites itself, so you can't go back and find out what happened.
Like you were trying to demonstrate on the data that you provided, so you can see which ones will be blanked out and so on.
Right. Yes, sir. We also found that there was illegal software on these machines. This software is all supposed to be certified and only certified. We have not found a machine yet that doesn't have a program on it called Microsoft SQL Server Management Studio. That is a software that is designed to allow a database person to go in and make any change they want in the database without any track, or trail, or trace whatsoever in real time. And it is on these machines. We saw it.
So it's accessible.
Pardon?
It's accessible is what you're saying.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
It's accessible from what method?
In any way that an intruder decides to go into these machines, the software then is sitting there, and you can just fire it up, and you can then go right into the database and make any changes you want. It shouldn't be there. There's no reason for it to be there. And it is not certified, which means technically, none of these machines are actually certified.
So that's what you're trying to, that's, the point you're making is, something shouldn't be there, but it is.
Correct.
And we need to know what those things are, if we want to use those machines, to make sure it isn't there.
Exactly. Exactly.
You follow where I'm trying to.
So we have found these kind of vulnerabilities now, all over the country, in different kinds of equipment. It, it all seems to be there. We also have found some very disturbing things in these machines. And this will sound a little technical, but let me try this. When votes go into your machine, they go in through a series of databases. There's the first database is the tabulation, and then adjudication, and then the main database. All the history is in that middle database. That tells you where the ballot came from, where the vote came from, and how it got there, if it was adjudicated, what had happened in adjudication. And what we are finding, but then the final numbers go into the main database. What we are finding is that that middle database suddenly gets wiped out and recreated, and no one running the election even knows it. But when it's recreated, a lot of those records aren't copied over. So now you have the numbers that are getting reported, but you no longer have any history about how it got there. And we have, we have seen that problem all over. So I know that time is short, so I'm going to leave it pretty much at that, but with one last thing that I want to tell you. It's kind of appropriate that here we are, close to Las Vegas. If I took this deck of cards, and Mr. Blundo, I asked you to shuffle them, and you did, and then I wanted you to deal out thirteen stacks of cards. And when we turned over each one of those stacks, we found this one was all aces, this one was all twos, this one was all threes, and not only that, but they all appear as clubs, diamonds, hearts, and spades. Would you believe that that was totally random chance? I doubt it. And yet, what we are seeing in the voting patterns, but, by the way, if you can do that, then you should go to Vegas.
We call that a mechanic.
But the point is, that what we are seeing in these voting patterns is far more improbable than that. We are finding changes that are absolutely impossible in the way that the votes actually come out at the end of the day. And without a chart, I don't even think I'm going to try to explain too much about it, except I will say this. A thermostat in your house is a PID controller. That is to say, you walk into your house, it's sixty-four degrees, you want it seventy. When you turn your thermostat to seventy, it then starts running a program, and the temperature starts going up, and it exceeds seventy, and then it comes down, and it goes below seventy, and then up. But little by little, it gets to the room of seventy, and then it stays there. Now, you could also set your thermostat to where, at six o'clock, you want it at seventy, seven o'clock, you want it at eighty, ninety, et cetera. Then it would have this kind of chart, and it would start to go up, and then it would go up straight line. Here's the problem. Mail-in tabulators, we are seeing that exact same pattern. And we're tabulating the percentage of each group of ballots, according to the percentage that are Trump and Biden, or a state rep race that went on at the same time. Now, what I'm really telling you is, that percentage should never change after the first few ballot dumps, because they're supposed to be random. They're supposed to be shuffled like these deck of cards. So why would it change? Why would it go up in a perfectly straight line? Can't. We have now seen that in forty different counties. There's something very, very wrong in our voting system, and it scares me to death. That's what I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. Okay. I'll go first.
All right, go ahead.
Yes. Is it possible to take all the votes from one election, and say you have five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand votes here and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand votes there, and you want somebody to win, or three or four somebodies to win that lost? Is it possible just to flip all the machines at one time and put the votes that should have went to, let's say, Obama, and those actually end up becoming the votes for the other guy? Is it possible to do a total flip without?
Sure. In fact, Mark demonstrated it.
Okay.
In fact, Mark is actually getting ready to build a full, functioned, exact replica of the Dominion voting system in Mesa County, Colorado. And then people will be able to bring their own iPhone up. We'll hold a little mock election with twenty ballots. People will see how it comes out. And then we can call someone up from the audience and have them bring their iPhone, and they will download their deal, and they will be able, across the room, to change the election. And people will be able to see that happen. Yes, ma'am. It's absolutely possible.
Okay, because I've lived through what I think were two elections that that happened for, in two different counties, where it should have been going this way, and it was, and it's basically the same thing that happened, or we theorize happened, with the Trump campaign, only it involved, it wasn't people in general, it was a bond issue.
Mm-hmm.
That should not have passed, because everybody was against it. But, by golly.
Somehow it passed.
Yeah, at the end of the day, it passed big time.
Right.
Big time. And somebody got what they wanted, but the voters didn't get what they wanted.
That's exactly right.
Anyway, so this is not anything that's really been new, because this happened, oh, God, ten years ago or so, and then another one that happened sooner, or since then.
Yeah, and this is not a Republican or Democrat issue. This is a problem for our country and for everyone.
Okay. So, yeah, so I've seen it firsthand.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Anyone?
Go ahead.
Anybody else?
No, I'm done.
Let's hear for the next person. Can we do that? Thirty-eight minutes already. I'm going to have to cut this thing short here. You're way over.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Phil Waldron, W-A-L-D-R-O-N. I've had the privilege of testifying around the country to state legislatures and counties like yours. One of those, just to answer your questions, was, there was in Louisiana, Professor J. Alex Haldeman, he's a cybersecurity professor at University of Michigan. And just to boil it down, he presented, the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine did a consensus study report on securing the vote. They said there's no realistic mechanism to fully secure vote casting and tabulation computer systems from cyber threats. He then went on to say, every, that every US voting machine subjected to rigorous independent security review suffered vulnerabilities that would enable malware attacks, including the Dominion ICX ballot marking device. There's a current lawsuit that might interest your county commissioners. It is in Georgia. Judge Amy Tottenberger, Professor Haldeman's, has got a report that's sealed, that identifies specific vulnerabilities to the ICX machines in sixteen different states. Nevada is one of those listed states. And we could definitely provide that information to you, to request that information if you'd like it. So the reason I'm here is to try to give you a look at solutions. We've given you lots of problems in bulk adjudication. This is Chapter fourteen in the Dominion Democracy Sheet 5.5. You had to move bulk ballots through, you know, CVS or CSV, an Excel spreadsheet, from one computer to another for bulk adjudication. But a system that'll work is precinct-level voting, paper ballots, tabulation, and you can use a, you know, hand tabulation, obviously, would be better, and then paper poll books. You mentioned earlier about how do you know if your ballot works? But this is a, this is a counterfeit-proof ballot. It's got multiple anti-counterfeit proceed measures in there. One is a pretty, pretty graphic UV light. One is a rare-earth mineral sensor up here. But each one of these ballots has a unique serial number, and those are printed up in the, up in the top left. They can be either, they can either be on a QR code, the barcode, or a serial number, just like on your, just like on your currency. So, and this, this unique ballot ID is that one, and that's identified by this QR code. So the voter goes to the precinct, and we like to think decentralized voting, lack of complexity, and more simplicity is best for voting. You vote with your neighbors, you count your ballots with your neighbors at the precinct level. So these ballots are printed up prior to the election with the precinct. If you're a precinct judge, and you have six hundred people in your precinct, where you order six hundred and twenty ballots, that gives you some for spoilage, some for mail-in, you know, you can use the same ballots for mail-in, some if you need to correct military ballots, or have a spoiled ballot. At the end of the day, the precinct judge accounts for six hundred and ten ballots. So no ballot that's not authorized can come into the system. And at the, when I vote, instead of a sticker, I pull off my bottom of this ballot, which has my QR code. At the end of the election day, those ballots get, taken an image and put up by an SLR camera, commercial off-the-shelf camera. You put them in a tray. You take a picture of the front side, you flip it over, put it in the second tray, you take a picture of the second side. These are uploaded by precinct to the county website, and everybody can inspect the ballots. So Mrs. Jones' fifth-grade class can do an audit of their precinct if they choose to. If they want to know how a school bond issue, they can go and look and see the school ballot. This still protects ballot secrecy, because I'm the only one that knows what my QR code says. But if I want to see that my ballot got to the precinct, and got to the county, and got counted, I can look up my specific ballot ID, go to it, and under Dog Catcher, I wrote in Barney Fife. Yep, that's my handwriting, that's my ballot, those are my check marks, or Xs, or fill in the bubbles. So the ballot, it's a good checks, a series of checks and balances. The voters get to check their ballot. The audit work is done during the counting, so everybody can audit the ballots, because they're, once they're voted and they're separated from the voter, they're part of the public record. The precinct-level voting would also have a paper poll book with the voters, hand signatures, and that's part of the public record. Louisiana mentioned that they would like a system that electronically graded the ballots, so you can create a script that watches for those bubbles. But for that week that you have to hand count, or validate, or cure the ballots, or do your canvassing, well, in a precinct level, you can count all those ballots, and that'll match, you know, the actual paper. The county level gets the precinct reports, they add those up, and on the county website, all the ballots are there for public inspection. So that's a system, a system, one that works, and one that we say is simplistic, transparent. There were concerns about ADA, voters with visual disabilities. The American with Disabilities Act does provide provision. The examples of auxiliary aids and services for people who are blind or have low vision include a qualified reader, a person who's able to read, Braille. There's several other techniques where these ballots would be all ADA compliant. So, subject to your questions, and I was trying to speed-read there, be happy to leave one of these ballots with you if you'd like to look around. And the team is available to answer any questions, provide any details, that you might have questions afterwards. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair.
Go ahead.
I have nothing. I just want to say thank you.
Chair, if I have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Mr. Marchand? You have the final short word, please.
So, thank you again. The bottom line is, the electronic voting machines are so vulnerable and so uncertifiable, I don't see how we can trust them. And we need to go back to a basic decentralized system that Phil just described, to make sure that we can ensure that our constituents know that they have a fair and transparent election, and that's going to be the only way to do it. The computer systems are so complex that even cyber experts can't determine that they haven't been altered or manipulated. And with the paper ballots, hand-counted at the precinct level, decentralized, we're going against what the forces want. They want centralized, so they can manipulate it. So if we go against that and get back to decentralized with the people, at the people's level, that's how we're going to guarantee that we have a fair and transparent election. So I would urge, I would urge all of you to vote to get rid of the electronic voting machines and tabulators, and let's get back to the basics and ensure that we have a fair and transparent election.
Thank you for bringing the team. Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you for that. So it's, unfortunately, we have to go back into the process. The process is, there's a motion that may be made for this particular activity. Again, there's two ways of looking at it. You can do it for the beginning, which would be during a primary, or you can do it during the general. You need to know how the board wants to look at that. But before we even get into even a motion, I'm going to ask for public comment. This is the reason why I said that we have to have a certain amount of time. We've taken up almost an hour.
Chairman, am I going to be able to speak on this at all?
After public comment.
Sure, you want to.
And why would you like me to speak?
Let me get the public down here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Comf, K-A-M-P-F, for the record, candidate for nine-county clerk. I fully support the move to increase the transparency and to go to paper ballots and the manual hand count. Through my process of meeting people in this county, one of the biggest concerns was whether or not they should even vote. And when I hear that, it brings me great concern. I found myself many times trying to convince people that until, unless we continue to vote, only then can we secure the rights that we have as citizens. And this applies to individuals, no matter what party they belong to, because the role of the clerk is to provide a secure system for every citizen within this state and within this county. Now, I know that there's going to be some challenges involved with that, and the timing of that is, can be discussed. But I do believe that we have to take action, and as the leader and the rulers in this county, in this. and the rulers in this county, in this state, we have the ability here to take some action and provide leadership for the entire state. We cannot rely on some of the other counties that might have larger voter populations to take this kind of action. But we need to take action in this county, and I believe this is moving in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Richard Goldstein, G O L D S T E I N. This is eighty pages of gobbledygook. Makes absolutely no sense to anybody. This whole thing is about the result of the 2020 election. If the 2020 election had gone the other way, we wouldn't see any of this crap. It's because people are unhappy with it. Get over it. It's over. Let's move on to 2022 election and quit playing around with a system that did work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody on the phone? Sam?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kery Dermik. That is K E R R Y C U R M I C K, and I'm with Albany, New York, Nevada. I am calling in opposition to Agenda Item Number Twenty-Eight, which would transition nine-county elections to an all-paper ballot system, as well as require the paper ballots to be hand-counted. Switching to an all-ballot paper system would be a financial burden to nine-county, given the number of ballots that would need to be purchased and the number of workers necessary to hand count ballots. Additionally, it would make it harder for Nevadas with disabilities to participate in our electoral process. Nevada believes in making voting more accessible for all eligible voters and to keep nine-county's elections accessible. Please oppose Agenda Item Number Twenty-Eight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Make sure the button is pushed.
Chair, Beth Borisevich, B O R Y S E W I C H. The bottom line is, when you get a presentation like this, you go, who's gonna make out in this? What is it this presentation for, number one? What does this company get out of it to give us this presentation? I understand transparency. I understand everybody's upset about Trump. I am, but, you know, I got over it. But the thing is, that I want to know, is what does this company that just gave us this presentation get out of this if we move to a paper ballot? On top of that, computers, yes, if they're not connected to the internet and they don't have wireless cards, or if they do, then the IT director should find those and disable them, and then we just have ballot machines that do counting and processing. There's no reason to sit here and scare everybody out of their skin saying that we're gonna have everything out on the internet. There are ways to prevent it, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. On the phone?
Thank you, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hello. Good afternoon. Could you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Good afternoon. So my name is Dora Martinez, D O R A M A R I T N A Z. I represent the Nevada Disability Peer Action Coalition Group. I also represent the American Council of the Blind of Nevada, which are there's many blind folks who are your constituents in the nine-county. Last year, we championed and passed Assembly Bill 121, which codifies electronic voting to be affected. I believe it was July first or October first. I can't remember. But this Nevada electronic assistance absentee system for election is a law now. And people with disabilities, especially blind folks, I am blind, not all of us knows how to read Braille. My husband went to vote in person, and people and the person who was doing the ADA coordinator in the our precinct, in the polling place, was not aware on how to help my husband. So his voting experience was very bad. It wasn't private. He had to be read to what the ballot was, and he had to speak out loud who he had to vote for in public. So that integrity and lack of private voting was taken away. And while if you guys are gonna okay this, this will take that voting integrity and our independence to vote in our own time away from us, and this is going back. We're American with Disability Act, it became law in 1990, and it is now 2022. Please do not go backwards. This month is Developmental Disabilities Month, so please remember, all of us, remember everybody who are your constituents. Not everybody have a car, not everybody have a transportation to get to their polling place. So the electronic voting is secured. I mean, otherwise, we won't be buying things off of computers. Our debit cards would be out there all over the place. I haven't heard anything about that. So these elections, electronic voting are secured. I don't know what this company is talking about, but please. I can't drive. There's no public transportation that's reliable in nine-county for my blind, my blind American Council of the Blind members out there. They get stuck. They have to depend on their personal assistant caregivers, and sometimes they can't even make it out there to drive them to the polling place. And they want to do it independently in their own home, the comfort of their own home. That's all I need to say. Thank you so much.
Ma'am, thank you. Sir, go right ahead.
My name is Bruce Hauser, B R U C E H A U S E R. And I have just a few comments. One, my first comment is, there were counts and recounts and recounts and recounts all across this country for the last election. None of them showed to be false. All the claims were wrong. My next statement is this. The gentleman said that all of those paper ballots, the results for all those paper ballots, were going to be uploaded, uploaded, that's to a computer. The next thing I have to say is, is a question, really, and that is, who is paying you people to be here today? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
On the phone?
I would, excuse me, I would ask the members of the public to give the same respect to the Speaker if you were speaking as well. Let's have some decorum in the audience.
Thank you.
The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Amber Falgo, A M B E R F A L G O U T. I am representing Institute for a Progressive Nevada, and I am testifying in opposition to Item Twenty-Eight today. I have voted since I was of age to vote in December 2006. I know that ages me. The first election I voted in was in 2008. Every time I have voted, I have used electronic voting machines, and every election in which I voted, there has been no substantiated widespread voter fraud, nor has the election been overturned for any reason. Switching to paper ballots decreases access to voting for no legitimate reason. Fraudulent claims of voter fraud, rhetoric, and misinformation are not strong enough reasons to make voting inaccessible or more burdensome for voters. Not only will this resolution make voting more difficult for voters, especially those with disabilities, it will significantly increase the work of our election folks, our workers, our heroes. Paper ballots are more costly, more time-consuming, and decrease accessibility. All of us want safe and secure elections that allow us to exercise our right to vote. Item Twenty-Eight does nothing to increase safety or security, and I urge this Commission to oppose it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Kayla Pointe, last name L A P O I N T E. I'm just here in support of what we've heard today. And just briefly, how many of us have a Facebook account, an Instagram account, a Twitter account, a debit card, or a charge card that's been compromised? I had one compromised here in town about three months ago horrifically. Any system on this machine can be defeated by someone, somewhere. Doesn't mean it's here, but by somebody in another country, or somebody in another state, or somebody who wants to change data. It can be done. It happens in all of our lives. Why can't we go back to, like, when I grew up, where you voted in your precinct? My mom and dad worked at the precinct. They worked all day, and the votes were tabulated, just like the gentleman was talking about, and I don't see a problem with that. And anybody who has a disability of any kind could get a mail-in ballot. That shouldn't be a problem. Those people that need that can still access that if they need it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. On the phone?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay. You gotta click on that, and I'll tell you why. When you open the agenda, at the very top...
Excuse me, sir. Can you say your name for the record? Mr. Lewis?
Okay.
Do you know your...
Yes, hello.
Come on, let's go.
I'm sorry. I was on the phone with Bill Holden. I just want to say thank you for doing this, Commissioners. You're wonderful. Would you please also look up blackboxvoting.org? Bev Harris, she did a huge documentary on all of this. As long as these voting machines are in place, and even Sam Merlino, who's wonderful, she thinks she's being told the truth. She is not. You gotta get away from these machines, or come November, there's gonna be a revolution in this country when they steal the election again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody on the... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, briefly, that was Herman Lewis, L E W I S. Just to make it.
Hello, Commissioners. Melissa Blundo, a citizen of nine-county, also candidate for Assembly District Thirty-Six. I have heard a presentation from...
You spell your last name for the...
B L U N D O. Where you can look up there. Anyways, I have heard a presentation from Mark Meadows, also Jenny Beth Martin, and this is the third time I've heard a presentation, and there's been consistent information and evidence, as well as a little bit of extra information every time I've heard different presentations. And technology is supposed to make things easier, right? But it doesn't always do so. And if you haven't read Molly Hemingway's book, Rigged, I highly suggest that you read it. It's very good information, and I think it gives us solid proof that the safest and most effective way for us to vote securely is through paper ballots and hand counting. I'm here in support of Agenda Item Twenty-Eight, and I ask that you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam on the phone?
The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Yes, Amy Nelson, A N E L S O N. I am in support of Item Twenty-Eight, and I'll tell you why. Last year, I was a volunteer for the nine-county Republican Central Committee, and I made phone calls to thousands of numbers and people that were registered voters that their ballots were returned for some reason or another. One of those people was actually one of our past staff members, Dave Fanning. He had moved out of state, but he forgot to register with the Secretary of State in Nevada, and his information was being mailed out for five years to his old address. I had taken calls from people that had spouses that had passed away that had not been reported, or was difficult to report. So they were still on the ballots for years. And I'm wondering, how do these ballots get returned to the nine-county clerk's office or to the Secretary of State? I never received my information for my new registration either. It was listed on the items that I get notifications from every day for what mail is being delivered to me, but I never got it, and I'm wondering, did it get returned back to the clerk's office? Are they aware that none of us are getting those mails? And also, these are computer experts. I didn't hear that they worked for a company, but I did hear that they are security computer experts. I grew up with computers. Computers are easily hacked. I don't care where you have them. I don't care how you think they run. There's always gonna be somebody, like the high school kid, that's hacking into Elon Musk computers, and now he's hacking into the Russian jet computers. So it's very evident that we can have a choice. We can have a mail-in ballot if we want one for disabled people, and we can still have a mail-in ballot, in my opinion. That's the way it was for decades, and never was a question about people cheating on the ballots. We have poll watchers. We can't do that, really, with these computer systems. They can tell you, you have to be ten feet away. Well, how can you tell what's going on when they're ten feet away? Or they won't even let you that close. So there's many, many reasons why we should go back to a system that worked, that wasn't broken, so why did we fix it?
Ms. Nelson?
And I don't think...
Ms. Nelson, thank you.
Well, thank you. Anyway, it's gonna be the same amount of ballots. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Lillian Donohue, D O N O H U E. I'm a forty-five-year lawyer, and I really believe in honesty at the polls. I totally agree with your, the Agenda Item, that we need to go back to the paper ballots. The one woman's explained that her accounts have been compromised on the internet. Same thing happened to me a couple weeks ago. I put $3,000 in my bank account on Monday, and by Thursday, I was a thousand in the hole. They made several $100 debits on my account. I had checks that bounced. Everything went down, and it was pretty awful. And so I'm really a believer that we need to get things checked out. And that is, what they can do to you on the computer is unbelievable. We need to be back with those paper ballots. We need to be able to watch what's going on, and I'm frightened if they get this in-the-mail stuff, and that we could do all this. I am frightened what's gonna happen in 2022. And we need to have a good, honest election, regardless if you're a Republican like I am, or you're a Democrat. We need to have the honesty. We need the honesty. It's critical.
Thank you, Lillian. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. ...
On the phone, Sam?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Matilda Guerrero. That's M A T H I L D A G U E R R E R O, and I'm calling on behalf of the Nevada Vote Coalition. We strongly oppose Item Twenty-Eight because paper ballots are time-consuming and they hinder the ballot counting process, as it can be very tedious, cumbersome, and delay election results. This may also lead to distrust in the efficiency and security of our voting process. Also, paper ballots are very costly and may even result in election staff shortages due to the labor and sets of work that goes into this process. It's also important to acknowledge that paper ballots may not necessarily be accessible for all voters with disabilities. Some folks within this community experience barriers when attempting to independently handle, read, or mark their paper ballots. Electronic ballots, however, would eliminate those accessibility issues and protect that individual's right to an anonymous private ballot. With the passage of Assembly Bill 121, which passed in Nevada Senate unanimously, voters with disabilities have the option to register to vote, request, and cast a Uniformed Overseas Citizen Absentee Voting Act ballot, the Nevada's Effective Absentee System for Elections, or YOUCOVAN, in B for short. Allowing this community the option to vote in a manner that is most accessible to them eliminates barriers associated with voting, such as finding reliable transportation and a trusted individual to assist them. So before nine-county considers the transition to an all-paper ballot election and the hand count of those ballots, we urge this Commission and the county clerk to not push back on voting rights by considering the harm it would cause to voters with disabilities and how it undermines election security. Also, I just wanted to give a special thank you to Ms. Merlino and her office. Despite 2020's many adversities, her office prioritizes the safety of safe and secure elections during unprecedented times. Ms. Merlino, her office collaborates so much with a limited timeframe and capacity, and for those reasons and more, they deserve to be celebrated and remembered as public servants dedicated to democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. And I concur with that. I want to thank Sam Merlino for all her hard work. My name is Caroline Logue, L O G U E, and we certainly appreciate all the efforts within the county clerk's office and on the state level. And I just want to inquire as to the law that was passed last year in the Nevada State Legislature, Assembly Bill 321, and put into effect January first, that under that law, any voter who does not want to... any voter who does not want to receive a mail-in ballot can submit a written notice to the county or city clerk no later than 60 days before the day of the election. And it also put into place the ability for people to receive mail-in ballots, such as establishing polling places within a Native American reservation or do mail-in ballots. So the new law creates a shorter deadline for mail-in ballots or absentee ballots to be accepted, but it does pass many things that I would think it would make the voting more widespread and accessible, as well as safer. And I would certainly hope that these gentlemen that spoke would have worked within states to help them secure their systems rather than disposing of methods that could extend voting to more people. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioners, my name is Jeffrey Dy, D-Y-E. My main thought here is, is that we've got an opportunity to look at what the clerk does with the machines and our security, and look at the process there, rather than taking a step back from the technology that we've created. As the county grows and as our voter number base grows, how are we supposed to navigate the paper ballot system whenever we've got the ease to use the electronic systems? If they can't connect to the network, or if the network isn't in triple-level security, then we are in a position that we can defend ourselves from those bad agents. And I will tell you this, doesn't matter what you have in place, bad agents are gonna find a way to get through that system. We heard testimony today that 40 counties have been affected. Forty counties in the U.S. is roughly 1.3% of our counties. So how can we defend here, rather than taking a step back as we want to grow and we want to create these systems that allow us, as a community, to grow quicker and faster and easier, rather than taking a step back? Thank you.
Thank you. Sam, on the phone?
The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Erica Gerling, G-E-R-L-I-N-G. Thank you, Commissioners. In your backup-
Excuse me?
In your backup-
I'm sorry. Hang on one second. Can we get a little cooperation out there? Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Ms. Gerling.
Um, yes. Did the speakers present evidence of their claims in your backup? I'm not able to get on the backup right now.
You guys wanna answer that question? I believe we do have some evidence, yes?
Yes.
It's actually in the backup.
Okay, thank you. I'll keep trying.
Thank you.
Samuel Jones, J-O-N-E-S. I'm the bad guy here. I asked Mr. Jim Marchand a few months ago, would he come down? Because I've been fighting for a forensic audit here, as everybody knows, for years. So if you gotta blame somebody, blame this guy. And they don't have a company. They took this time out of the goodness of their heart and the goodness of this country, what's happening in this country, to come here and present this to the Commission and to the citizens of Nye County. And I just thank God that this happened today, because people need to wake up in this country. It's not about whether you're a Republican or a Democrat. It's about, we're losing our republic. And we don't need to lose our republic. I, for one, am ready to die for my beliefs, as well as most of the people in here. So I urge you folks, the paper ballots, when I first moved here, that's what we had, paper ballots. Sam, it's a little extra work, but the machines, it's proven the machines will lie to you. You got a cellphone. You know how it works. Paper ballots, you can hand-count them. It takes a few extra minutes. Let's do it. Thank you.
Sam on the phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you, Sam. Ma'am, go right at it.
Hi, Diane Southworth, S-O-U-T-H-W-O-R-T-H. And I got my registration card. Thank you. Just, my thought is, who says that counting them by hand is gonna be any less corrupt? They've had corruption in hand ballots all over this country from time to time. So I personally think that this is just a ruse. They've gone to 60 court cases, couldn't prove a thing, never be able to get anything done. If you wanna waste your time and your money on this, that's fine. But I personally think that even on the forensic audits that they have done in Arizona and one other state, they actually came out with more votes for Biden. So keep it up. But I think it's a stupid idea.
Ma'am? Nobody on the phone?
Tina Treaner.
The next three people. I'm gonna close public comment.
Sam Merlino, you probably remember, in 2014, a man named Colonel Bob Frank was a computer expert for Wells Fargo Bank, a security expert. And he went before the legislature and spoke about the fact that, no matter what you do, you cannot keep these machines from being hacked. There's no way that you can protect yourself, because ultimately, there's someone that can get it done. And we had a meeting over at the Grant Sawyer Building, and all of the county clerks came and spoke about how flawless their machines are. I have not been here through one election where we haven't had a glitch. That's the word. We're having a glitch, and it's like usually 40 minutes into the election. And we have a glitch, and it takes a while, and it gets fixed. I don't know what a glitch is. I have no idea what that means. But I think all of you remember them. Anyway, pardon my voice. Been sick. But I just think that what I said a long time ago to you, let's vote Amish, no electric, just paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Sam.
My name is Charles Nebel, N-E-B-E-L. And I don't think any machine is good when they can fix my computer from the East Coast. And I vote for paper ballots, and take the money you're spending on the machines, and add more people counting votes.
Thank you, Sam.
Joe Burdzinski, B-U-R-D-Z-I-N-S-K-I. One of our most sacred responsibilities of Americans is the right to vote. And I believe that the majority of people are really starting to question our voting process. And when we look back, I first started, and you can get my age, you can figure it out, 1972 is the first time I voted. I wielded a machine, mechanical machine. You pull the red lever, the curtain's closed behind you, you flick down the little levers. After that, there were bubble machines. And we all remember Al Gore and Bush, hanging chads and dimples or whatever. And ever since we started to change from a manual paper process, and we've involved electronic equipment, there have been more and more doubts put in the mind of the voters. And it's very important that we, as Americans, take care of our voting process and make sure that each and every American that wants to vote can vote, and that their vote will count. I urge you to vote yes on this Agenda Item 28. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Last but not least-
Happy to go last. Thank you. My name is Brian Shoemake, S-H-O-E-M-A-K-E. For over 20 years, I've worked in the tech industry. My business is tech. And I have gone to war with hackers. I've gone to war with malware protecting websites. My company hosts websites for people, so I'm involved in these kind of things on a daily basis. What these gentlemen are telling you is absolutely true. I've got college degrees in information technology and computer technology, so I understand, I don't claim to be an internet security expert, but I understand all the technology they're talking about, and what they're telling you is absolutely true. It makes no difference who the person running the operation with the best intentions, completely There are ways in that you could never detect. That's the bottom line. And to hear some of the dissenting comments today, you would think, these guys must be right over the target. It's not a partisan issue. This is something that if we suspect there's a problem, it's our responsibility to find out exactly how vulnerable we are. If we don't do so with the knowledge we have, shame on us. And we would be, we would not be doing our due diligence and our duty. I don't know if all the people in attendance here today understand how fortunate we are to have experts like this come visit us and share their expertise with us. Like I said, this is not partisan. I would have to say, if the voting results were to flip, I seriously suspect that some of these opinions might change suddenly. And that's too bad, because in this day and age, everything has to be politicized. This is not something that needs to be politicized. It needs to be addressed. When you can see government agencies like the Department of Defense being hacked, when you can see corporate businesses being hacked, and millions of credit card data users being downloaded, those organizations have security, the highest level of security, and yet still, they're compromised. So it's a myth. It's wrong. It's, any organization or any computer system can be accessed. And average, everyday person is just not sophisticated enough in computer information technology and network security to understand or even know when they have been. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sam, anybody else?
Can I say one thing about paying?
Come on, people. Come on. Anybody else, Sam?
No, Chair.
I'm gonna close public comment. Jim, do you have one more thing you wanna say?
I'm gonna address the payment.
Microphone. Name for the record.
Jim Marchand. I wanna address these guys getting paid and the company stuff that everybody's saying. These guys paid their own way here, because they're patriots. They care about their country. They're not getting paid to do this. I paid some of the expenses. They paid a lot of their own expenses. So there's no company that's getting paid to do this. We're not getting George Soros money to bring these guys in and do this. So I just wanted to clear that record.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I'd like to ask-
Go ahead, clerk.
Yes, I have a few comments, and the presentations were great, and I have no issue with any of that. My biggest issue is that right now, I'm still, I still have to follow Nevada law. I still have our current procedures in place for audio for those voters who cannot, who are vision impaired. We are already so far into this primary election. My ballot stock is ordered. In two weeks, I'll be sending everything to our vendor to create our ballot styles and our ballots. I cannot even consider this for the primary. It's just physically impossible for me to do it this time. Now, thing is, in between that time, I'd be happy to do an analysis. Right now, no one in the state of Nevada does this. They don't hand-count and use all paper ballots. I would really like to get some regulations from other states who do hand-count, so that I can get proper processes in place and procedures and training. We could, in order to meet the Nevada statutory deadlines, I just don't know if hand-counting, we can meet those deadlines, hand-counting. So it is something to consider. Am I going to have to hire 300, 600 people to try to get this done, to meet our deadlines, to get that risk-limiting audit done? We have to have the results done within 10 days after the election. That's when our canvass is required, besides the RLA. So these are things that really have to be considered, and it's gonna take time to get this in place. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying, no, I will not do. I'm not saying anything like that. I just think I need to get past the primary, because we're already so far in. I have everything ordered. My ballots are ordered, the stock, everything is done. And I just don't see how I could possibly get this done for the primary. But, like I said, the analysis for the general, I'm happy to do that, look into regulations, how we're gonna meet those statutory deadlines, doing it this manner. How I will figure out to provide those ADA-compliant machines, I'm still gonna have to have a vendor who creates our ballots, which is going to be some sort of WinADS program or Dominion program. Then, not only that, but we have a Dominion contract to worry about. What are our obligations in that contract? What will it cost us to dissolve that contract? Those are things that have to be looked into, and it's gonna take a little bit of time.
We've had some good discussion, clerk. You've taught me a bunch. And then, in the discussion, you pointed out that we have 34 precincts. And of those 34 precincts, you're not gonna have over 500 people per precinct, because it's not allowed. That's where maximum is, is what-
5,000.
5,000, sorry. So that 5,000 number. And so if we take our, even if we take our number that we had at the time of the general election at the highest point, and we were to divide into each precinct into three groups, and we were to run that, the hours it would take, would take us three days to count each one of those. We went over that together at lunch in Tonopah. And three to five days is what we had decided when we went to lunch in Tonopah.
I'm not sure about that. That was taking three minutes per ballot.
Yeah, yeah.
Even a better indication would be three to 10, depending on how-
Complicated each ballot is.
Exactly.
How many are on each ballot.
That's after the transport of ballots to a counting place.
Right. And there's a lot of logistics. We would all have to be in Tonopah. You would have to put those ballots away at night in the vault, bring them back out each day. There'd have to be a place where that all took place. We talked about the fact that if, since we have the mail-in ballots, those mail-in ballots could be, if you'd consider it, could be used rather than the machines. But the only problem with that is then we have to send those mail-in ballots through the scanner, which is a Dominion device. And anytime we allow the Dominion device to touch the ballots, we have to seal those ballots as soon as the Dominion device is done. And then we cannot reopen those without a judicial, a judge, allowing us to do so. So then we would have already said what the election was, because 10 days after the election's closed, we have to certify it as Commissioners. So there's a lot of challenges. Yes, please.
And as we also discussed, there's still a challenge process to an election, or a contest, I shouldn't say challenge. There's a contest of an election as well. So even though we go through the primary, we get the results, it is, I shouldn't say it's easy, but you can contest the election in the courts. We can do a recount by hand at that time of all ballots, if that's what is chosen, at least to get through the primary, if that's what makes everyone comfortable. But that's, you know, that's just an option.
There's a lot of moving parts here, Chair. I'm waiting here.
So again, we've had public comment. We've had discussion. I wanna know if we ever have a motion.
I do have one more comment. I'll be quick. You know, as I said, I have to follow Nevada law, but I also have to figure out if we do have an issue with the hand count, if we're off and we have to hand count again and again. You just have to think about the cost of doing a hand count more than once, and also the impact it has on the voters of Nye County. Not everyone agrees with this. Some do, some don't. But the delay in results also impact Nye County's voters, as well as the voters in the state, because we do run federal and state elections. So that's just something to consider.
All right. Thank you. I got, before I pick you for a second, if you will. Jim?
Yes, sir.
You've heard a lot of the conversation, and you've heard from the clerk saying about the timing and so on and so forth, the money that's going to be required and so on. You had mentioned just a second ago, you're going to help. What do you mean by help?
Well, we can bring in people to help through the process of whatever she needs, and we've got access to those groups that can do that.
Okay, and these people are going to be vetted and be able to be validated?
Yes, and then we can let you validate them also.
I just, so, so I just wanted to make sure that we had.
Yes, we are, we have a, groups of people that would love to be able to participate in this process, for sure. And that's what precincts should bring forward and be back to
Right.
The way that we were in the day. And I know some people are like, well, we're going backwards, but if we're really not secure, then we're really not secure. And you've heard all of that. I don't need to reiterate that. But I'm happy that, to be able to have worked with, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I'd like to make a motion.
Will we go through that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners.
I'm going.
No, no, it's okay. I'd like to thank everybody for your presentations and also the public for your feedback. As you know, when we have items like this that are agendized, I like to take account. And it was a count of 13 that's here publicly and on the phone for us to move forward with this, and 10 that are in objection. One of the things that Mr. Marchand mentioned was a fair and transparent election. He didn't say anything about Republican or Democrat. It's for all. It's for all. And yes, we absolutely need to set the clerk's office up for success and not failure. And this is where time is of the essence, because of the primary just around the corner. So we would need to get volunteers that are vetted and workers to assist with this endeavor and process if we move forward. I am for the paper ballot, because as many of you, I also grew up holding my parents' hands, walking into the polls and watching the process. And they said, and someday you will be doing this and do your research for whoever it is. But what I would also like to see and for us to consider is that we put the paper ballots on the general election as an advisory question with the pros and the cons for all of the people of Nye County to voice their opinion. This is my opinion. It's not on the agenda, but something to consider, please. So it's not thrown back at us later on to say, yeah, you guys didn't do it right. You rushed it and you didn't do it right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, folks.
The other commissioner?
I, I wanted to say some things. If you want me to do it before the motion or after?
Oh, if you're going to make a comment that might sway or do something, Commissioner, go right ahead.
I have a question for Jim. It was, it was mentioned in here at one of our previous meetings that you said that your people could help pay for some of the financial end of this. Is that true? Do you have some funding that we could?
That is a possibility, yes.
Forward?
Yes. Can't say definitively, but I think that we could probably work towards that. But, you know, a lot of people are saying, what are the costs of this? What are the costs of us losing our Second Amendment rights? What is the cost of us losing our First Amendment rights? Because that's where we're headed if we don't do this.
Okay, yes. As far as I'm concerned, the election's more important than the money. But, so we can work on the, the money as this thing goes along. And I wanted to ask Sam, if this passes, would it be possible to stop your order on whatever you've got coming in?
No. It, you know, especially with this ballot or paper shortage. My ballots are ordered. My quantities are ordered. I do not know if I can get more. And the, and the problem is that because we have mail-in and in-person, and the presentation earlier, somebody said, well, hey, if you have a precinct with 500 ballots, you ordered 550, so you have extras. The problem is with the mail-in that we have, because I have to send those mail-in ballots. But then all of those people could show up at the polls and want to vote a paper ballot in person. So there's no way right now for me to gauge how many people are going to show up in person. So I will probably have to order an additional 20,000 ballots to have at the polls. Even though we're sending out 31,000, I don't know who's going to show up and demand to vote in person. So it's, it's almost doubled the number. And until we get rid of mail-in or something, this is the way it would be for every election, is it's a guessing game, how many I'm going to have to have at the polls. And the other thing to consider is that ballot boxes, I think I've spoke to you already, I have, I think maybe at the most 10 ballot boxes. I will probably need more, like 80 to 100. I'm going to have to get ballot boxes before that time. I'm going to have to figure out who's going to carry those ballot boxes. Right now, everything is on wheels, it's easy. I don't know if you've ever carried a ballot box like I have with those paper ballots. They're very heavy. So not only that, we need the staff or buildings and grounds personnel to have to carry those ballot boxes to and from the polling location during early voting. Every day, all those ballot boxes will have to go back to the clerk's office and stored in the vault that I have no room in. So that's another thing. You guys are going to have, you would have to find me a storage space that is lockable, so that every night, those ballots could go back into that storage space. Every morning before early voting, it'd have to be transported back to the early voting location. So that's a two-week period. We have to go back and forth, not just Election Day. Election Day is easy, but early voting is, is something else to consider. So these are all things that I, that's why I'm asking. The primary is really difficult to get all this in place. I don't have procedures to train these people on how to handle paper ballots right now. I don't have anything in place. There's no state regulations for me to handle this right now.
I don't mean to cut you off, but, thank you for.
Okay, well, we, we, you know, you're going to order all these paper ballots anyway. I don't see any reason we couldn't use those. They're paper. You know, you said you're going to do mail, I'm sorry, mail-in, the mail-in?
The order is, is already the mail-in. Those are already being used, so they're not extras.
But they're going to everybody, right?
But they're going out. So when somebody shows up at the polling place, I have to have a stack of ballots for each precinct, each party, each style, to give out if somebody shows up in person. Because literally, last election, people tore up their old ballots. They didn't want to get it through mail, they tore it up. They would have to come in and get another paper ballot. So I'd have to order about 20,000 more ballots to have on hand.
Well, I see it this way, that I think the fact that we're doing mail-in ballots, a lot of people will just mail them in rather than, I mean, why would we be having to come to a voting place?
I think if we get to a motion, people will know where we're going with this. I mean, that's, I hear what you're saying.
Okay, I just, I just was inquiring as to, they're talking about all the expense of having ballots. Well, we're already going to have mail-in ballots that are already accounted for and paid for and blah, blah, blah. And if we don't do the machines, period, there's no reason for anybody to go to a voting place, other than.
Right now, the law states they have the ability, if they choose to vote in person, to go to a polling place. I can't change that.
Okay, that's fine, but they would already have their ballot. They could bring it to the polling place, they could vote it, and then, you know, so.
Easier said than done.
I know, but it's the first time for everything, because I think this is extremely important, not only to us, it's extremely important to the whole nation. And so that was just some inquiries, so it could help people make up their minds. But I have to say, I would support this.
Then may I make a motion?
Well, let's get a motion, so.
I'd like to make a motion
So we know what we're actually going to go do.
To request the Nye County clerk to administer the 2022 primary and general election only on paper ballots and hand counting those paper ballots. Thank you.
Have a motion. Do I have somebody to second that?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. So now, Commissioner Brandeau, you said you needed to have a motion.
Okay, fantastic. So what I really hear is, is, and Sam, I know you're not a fan of any of this, so you, I, I, Sam, I, I know that. I've seen you, you've definitely been defending and trying to show and highlight, but I also hear what you're saying. And what I'm reading between the lines is, it's still mail-in ballot, and you're still going to mail those out, because that's what the NRS says. So I don't see where we're coming around in doing paper ballots. So who's going to get a paper ballot? Anybody who comes to show up?
The mail-in ballots could be paper, couldn't they?
Well, those are technically a paper ballot. So are we, are you, is it just a big show, or, I mean, this is a question I really need from her right now. I need to know, what are we going to do for people who show up at the polling place that want to vote on a paper ballot? Because that's the motion on the table. That's what I need to know right now.
That's what I was explaining to Commissioner Cox. I, I will have to order another 20,000 or so ballots to have at the polling locations for those people who show up in person and want to vote by paper ballot, or vote in person rather than that mail-in ballot.
No Dominion machines, correct?
Right now, I'm going to have to have a Dominion machine at each polling location, because I do not have the means to provide ADA compliant voting unless I do that. And right now, I don't know that I can break federal law and not have those there. Like, like we had a caller on earlier, the fact that I would have to sit there and read the ballot to somebody so they could mark it, that's not, that's not acceptable based on the federal law for ADA.
Does your motion include and have an understanding that she would have to have that for an ADA compliance?
If she touches the Dominion machine, we have to have the judge seal, it has the, from what I understand, clerk, if a Dominion machine is used at all, then that has, the votes are sealed, and you can't have it reopened except for by a judge. Is that correct?
It's the same for any election in any manner of voting, even the paper ballots. After the board I hire does account, those ballots are sealed and you can't have access to them.
Okay, so.
Same thing with the Dominion machines.
Okay.
Once those are tabulated, they are sealed, and unless by order of the judge, you can't have access to them.
Without, with it being a sensitive subject, would you be able to say that there are less than 50 people within Nye County or greater, or less than 100 people in Nye County that need this particular service?
I can't really say, but it doesn't matter.
You have that answer?
If only one shows up.
Oh, yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, because how do we tabulate that hand counting? Do we then take the
We can't.
Take the reel off and hand count it?
No, there's no provision in the law that allows me to hand count that paper roll. It's a backup for voter confidence. There's no provision in the law that allows me to use that to hand count.
I think that's the best you're going to get.
Okay.
I just want to be understood that that's a part of the motion that you, that we have here. She is still going to be ADA compliant.
Well, yeah, but I'd like to interject one thing about, these ballots would be for people that are blind, right? Those are the only.
Vision impaired, and also, you know, paraplegics can use these, but usually if they're vision impaired, but they can't use their hands. There's a sip and sip and puff that can attach these machines as well.
Okay.
So it could be anybody who, who needs that. And then, as somebody also was mentioning earlier, electronic, what they're talking about is, was it SB 121 or AB 121 is for, yes, well, no, not that one. It's a different one. They were talking about another measure that passed for ADA compliant voters. They vote on the Secretary of State's EASE program, and it comes over the internet. I mean, it is, well, it's not internet, it's a secure site that comes to us for those who can't get out of their homes, and they vote on an EASE program.
The only issue we have is the way the agenda item is written. We have no
Pardon me?
Well, the way the agenda item is written, it's very specific, because it talks about paper only, hand count only. So even adding electronic, something electronic into the discussion, into the motion, it can't happen, because.
We either request or we don't request, and we're requesting that the clerk administer. How she administers is the finite details.
So DA, I'm going to ask you a question. Was I correct in what I'm stating as far as the agenda item? I, I don't know how to get ADA compliance into that.
You're correct. You're correct that the agenda item was written a certain way. You say to the agenda, the motion was almost, almost exactly, the word "consider" was removed, and it does not address the machines. So you are correct.
Okay.
I, I have one quick little thing to add. I had some information emailed to me, but literally, it's about one in six voters can be considered disabled. So if you count that in Nye County, we could have approximately 5,000 disabled voters, if they all wanted to show up and use those machines. So that's just something to consider.
Most of them would be using pa, paper anyway, if they were voting at home. So if they come there, if they're just handicapped because they have a problem walking or something, they can still use a paper ballot. They don't have to have a machine.
Commissioner Cox, yes, they can, but the law requires me to have these machines that are accessible, so that they have independence in voting. Because if they vote them at home, they need assistance. These machines allow them to vote independently without assistance. That's what the difference is.
Can we make amendment to the motion to put that in? I know, but we make amendments all the time.
That's what I just got back from the DA, because I met.
And I say we're fine. We need to go ahead and vote, if you don't mind, Chair. And then, and then we will.
Let me clarify for the, for the commissioner. Because the way the agenda item is written, we don't have the ability to make that change.
Okay, so we just have to go with what we've got and make it work?
But I think it's in the net.
That's fine.
I think it's in there.
Thank you. Okay. I'm willing to volunteer.
So with that, I guess I'm going to call for the question.
Aye.
Your board's aye.
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 Your board is aye. That's 5-0?
Now we need your help.
This is where, this is.
Guys behind you. All right? Let's figure all this out. Thank you.
And the clerk will need your help, too.
And that's a motion to consider, right?
Consider it.
Okay.
No. It was, or?
Yeah, I'm going to take a
I didn't think it was.
Time we got to 10-minute break. Be back here at 20 after.
Requested what?